Welcome to everyone joining us in council chambers as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh media. We are pleased to have citizens participate in their local governments, so welcome to one and all. The city clerk, please take the roll.
Herman?
Here.
Pansky?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Pack?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Present seven.
And I'll ask Deputy Mayor Herman to lead us in the invocation and a pledge of allegiance, so everyone please stand.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the first order of business is citizen's statements to the council. Citizens are to address the council only. Citizens are -- statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council? You mentioned you wanted to.
I live at 530 North Main, apartment 103. Today, I'm coming before you to talk about and to advocate for myself and for others who use the bus for all. And I just want to take this time to educate and hopefully to help. The thing I want to say is that on Route number seven, you have to take the bus from downtown on Pearl Avenue. You get as far as -- Route five goes as far as in front of Festival Foods. And Route five becomes Route seven. If you don't use the bus. And Route seven goes on the Frontage Road and on the west side of 41, and then it comes back on the east side. And I'm concerned about -- I've had others tell me that they're concerned about the fact that they have to cross Kohler. And Kohler, you know, is pretty busy. And the point I wanted, the specific area, is right to Target, and then you have Affinity Healthcare. And there are a couple of doctors there, there are a couple of psychologists, I believe, and mothers. And basically, it's a hazard to cross from -- by the Target side to the -- over to the other side, to where the clinic is. They do have a stop and go light, but that one, but it's a signal that you have to push, you know? And people tend to go kind of quickly, you know, in that area. And I've had problems myself crossing it. And, oh, that must have been about six, eight months ago. And since then, I've avoided it, basically. But for the people that have to go, that have to go to that clinic, it's a hazard. So it's important to realize that it may sound like a very insignificant thing for me to talk about, but at the same time, if you put yourself in the position of a person trying to get across, and so I think it would be a good challenge for to take the bus from downtown. Oh, yeah.
If I may, Mayor? If I may?
Yes.
That issue came up before Transit Advisory Board at our previous meeting. We actually were approached by one of the nurses at that facility, so we are taking a look at that from the Transit Advisory Board perspective.
Okay.
So I have your information, and I can keep you up to date on that, but that has come across the advisory board, and we are looking into that particular stuff. So your concerns are definitely validated.
The other comment to have are that I haven't been able to really attend a Transit Advisory Board meeting, and I -- how do I say this? I feel that it's not always -- I know they don't always meet every month, and the communication between when they meet and when they don't meet is difficult. And so I'm just not real pleased with that, that aspect of it. But thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
If there are any other questions, just ask.
Did you say that with the Transit Advisory Board meeting, that you had problems accessing it, or just the communication piece of when it took place?
Well, the communication would be when the meetings are. And it seems to me that whenever -- I know some other people that are on the Transit Advisory Board, and it just seems to me that they meet at the pleasure of Dave Vickman and Jim Collins, where meetings should be set up with public notification, you know? And this is what bothers me. And so it's been a problem in the past.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council?
My name is Jane Dougherty, 11 Canof Court, and I would like to address the road construction on Bay Shore. And I'm giving compliments to Bowers Construction. Their crew manager, I believe, is Jason, and he has been very helpful in controlling traffic. Sometimes there were two trucks parked side by side, but he'd always make sure that they'd line up so I could leave Canof Court to get to Bay Shore and get out of that neighborhood and back into it. But it's been a challenge with a lot of noise and a lot of dust, but they're almost at the end. And I would also like to give a shout out to Public Works, the sanitation department. Scott does my garbage, and Keith does the recycling. And sometimes it was impossible for them to get their trucks down my street, which is a cul-de-sac. And one day, the construction crew helped bring all the garbage carts out to Bay Shore, but when they brought them back, they just went helter-skelter. So I called Public Works Department to find out what my cart number was, to make sure I had the right cart that belongs to my house. And so now I have attached my address on the cart, so if that should happen again, the right cart will be at the right place. And I would also like to acknowledge Mark, I believe from Public Works, that was not in charge, but he's kind of had watch over the water. Whenever they had to turn the water off, he made sure, he let our neighborhood know when the water was going to be turned off and when it was going to be turned on. So I would just like to acknowledge those individuals. And we're almost done. I feel like getting a T-shirt that said, "I survived the reconstruction of Bay Shore." But it's been an experience, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Public Works.
Thank you very much. I'll share that with my staff.
And I will acknowledge what Jane said, because I live on Bay Shore, and it's been a very, very smooth project, I think.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? I see no one coming forward, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. One, report of bills by Finance Director. Two, approval of cash reports in January, February, March, April, and May 2017. Three, receipt of claims filed with the city's insurance company. A R D heralds for alleged damages to pet fence wire when replacing sidewalk. B, April chase for alleged damages from a fighter vehicle fire. Resolution 17-336, approve amendment to professional services agreement with ACOM for environmental engineering for Buckstaff property, $25,000. Resolution 17-337, award bid to HD Supply Water Works and Ferguson Water Works for 2017 water materials and brass goods for Water Utility Division, $21,191.83 estimated. Resolution 17-338, award bid to Capelli Brothers and Diedrich, Inc. for Tyke Miller Park Restrooms Update for Parks Department, $98,680. Resolution 17-339, award bid to Rusinski's Painting for Downtown Transit Center Painting for Go Transit, $61,500. Staff has requested that Resolution 17-340 and Resolution 17-341 be removed. Takes us to Resolution 17-342. Approved settlement agreement with Menard, Inc. for property tax assessments for tax years 2016 and 2017 for property located at 2351 West Town Avenue. Resolution 17-343, approve appointment to Transit Advisory Board. And the final resolution under consent is Resolution 17-344, approve combination Class B licenses and special Class B licenses and operator licenses.
May I?
Pardon?
You forgot 17-352.
I'm sorry. Resolution 17-352, approve block party request, Thomas Hain, to utilize West 15th Avenue between Iowa Street and Minnesota Street to hold their neighborhood block party July 22, 2017. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address any of these resolutions on the consent agenda? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mayor? Resolution 17-338. Is Mr. Mauer here? Thanks, Mr. Mauer. So in the staff report where we're talking about the fiscal impact on this, there's a reference to, excuse me, $120,000 that was budgeted in the CIP for 2017, and so this looks like it came in under budget, right?
It did, however, there's architectural fees that are also part of that $120,000 that came out, I believe is referenced in the memo as well.
Right, the $6,200?
Correct. And then, so yes, it will be coming under budget, and we're proposing, as part of the renovation, we'll be installing security cameras, which in the past have been running about $6,000 for an installation, so.
So help me understand the part where it says, "Out of that, then there's $110,674 remaining." Would that, is that maybe a typo? Wouldn't it be more like $10,000 or $11,000?
Know what they were referring to, because I asked myself the same question as I was reading this memo. If you take the $120,000 and subtract the architect fee and the $3126, you're left with about $110,000. And that's available to reward the bid.
Okay, I see, so it was over and above, separated out, gotcha.
Yeah, it took me a second, though.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Patterson?
Regarding 17-342, the agreement with Menard, Inc. to -- related to property tax assessments, this is related to the dark stores issue, correct?
Yes, it is.
In an essence, where what we are seeing is big-box realtors or big-box retailers claiming that their property should be valued at, in essence, as an empty building. And in essence, what we are doing here is that Menard's is basically throwing their weight around and penalizing local property tax owners, local property taxpayers, as well as our local business owners. In essence, what they are doing is they are taking advantage of a loophole. We have seen this with Walgreens. We have seen it with other big-box realtors. This is an issue that has gone across the country. We're seeing more and more of this. And Mr. Roloff, exactly what is the total amount of property tax that we are shifting from this business to the individual property tax owners, as well as the small business owners in the city of Oshkosh?
That's in your staff report?
Oh, I'm aware of it, but if you would, please, so for the public.
Okay, just let me get to that part of the memo. That's what the refund would be.
So it seems to be a minimum amount, but we often hear about fairness with taxes. And the mayor, as well as the city manager, we're just down in Madison, testifying relating to some legislation that is being considered in Madison to address this issue. And it is not just Menard's, as I said, that is doing this. These are all of the big-box realtors. And while, yes, they do provide a service to the community, our community provides services to them, and what we're asking them to do is pay their fair share. So I urge all the citizens of Oshkosh to contact their local legislature, legislators, to contact Governor Walker, and in support of the fixing this loophole related to dark stores.
To add to that, the two bills that I testified in favor of were AB 386 and AB 387. City Manager Roloff and I were down there for most of the day. The chamber was full. There was mayors from throughout the state, city managers. It's a very bipartisan issue with the legislatures. And I did make this statement at the closing of my comments, that communities have to ask themselves, can we afford these type of businesses in our communities? They demand a lot of infrastructure. There is a big shift in retailing. I think we're seeing a lot of big-box stores closing, they're going to bankruptcy. So I think communities have to weigh, can we afford these type of businesses? And there seems to be a growing sentiment amongst other communities that they're looking at the question that I've just posed, can we afford these? Because it's very costly, and we've got situations in Oshkosh, there are buildings sitting vacant, have been vacant for 10 years. We're left with a big empty store and a lot of blacktop. So I think it's something we need the support of everyone in the community to realize the devastating impact of this. There have been communities in other states where they've had to refund money, it forced them to close libraries, it affects their schools. This is a serious, serious issue throughout a large part of the country.
And then just one other question to the mayor, and I believe many municipalities and localities testified in favor of this legislation. I believe there was only one or two groups that testified against it, and one of them was Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce.
All right, they're against these bills.
Can I just ask some clarification? Ms. Lawrenson, it also states as part of the settlement that they will dismiss the lawsuit and that they will release any claims against and will not file any further actions? Is that just regarding the '16 and '17 assessment years, or is that moving forward?
Correct. No, it would just be in relation to the two years that are the subject. Well, the '16 is the subject of the current litigation. We included '17 because we're actually starting Board of Review tomorrow, so.
So unfortunately, we could see something for '18, unless something bigger happens, which is where we need to step up.
Do you want to repeat those bills again? Yeah, the two bills in question, not in question, are AB 386 and AB 387. AB stands for Assembly Bill. But there's a lot of bipartisan support for these bills in Madison. And again, there was just a multitude of communities in Madison, big cities, small cities, testifying in favor of these two bills. If there are no further questions or comments about the consent agenda, we have a motion in a second. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 17-345, modify parking regulations to restrict parking on 10th and 11th Avenue from South Main Street to the end of the street. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this resolution or ordinance? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 17-346, modify parking regulations on Mill Street. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this ordinance? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Collins, if you could come forward. Not here? Maybe Mr. Roloff. It's just a brief question. We're adjusting quite a bit on this as far as we're making a through-street. I was just curious what type of signage warrants citizens that there's a change in the intersection from stop and go to traffic.
That's the next one. Are we on Mill Street now?
No, Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we went to the other.
I can't read that.
Oh, yours is going to be about Ridgefield? Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. I'll start looking.
Okay, any more questions on ordinance 17-346?
I was worried that we were doing more on Mill Street than.
That's a short street, too.
Yeah.
Should you please stop giggling and please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 17-347, designate Roosfield Sawyer Creek Drive as a through-street at the intersection of Mockingbird Way, in perennas, Mockingbird Way stops at the intersection, closed perennas. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this ordinance? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you. Just to notify, are we sending letters out? Are we putting something in the paper, how we notify the citizens of an intersection change?
This has been an issue that the neighbors have actually been bringing this issue up, so I don't think it'll be any surprise to them when that sign goes up. We just happen to have a resident expert who happens to live at the intersection, although she did -- Lynn didn't bring it up.
I did not make the request. She didn't bring it up. Just to be clear. But I know when the -- there is a yield sign there currently, and they'll just replace it on the same with a stop sign. There was no particular notification when the yield sign went up, but it has, it's been a topic of discussion in the neighborhoods. I don't expect it'll be a big surprise to anyone.
I take it traffic's not real heavy in that area, where we had some accidents or something?
It's basically, it's all residents in that area because it dead-ends farther down the road, so.
But that yield sign just doesn't get honored the way it should, and so stop sign is -- I'm not a big fan of yield signs in the first place, so I'm very comfortable with recommending this to council.
Okay. I think that was discussed at a Neighborhood Association meeting, too, and I attended it a few months ago, so, okay. Are there any further questions on this ordinance? Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
New ordinance, we have ordinance 17-348, approve closure of South Main Street, U.S. Highway 45 at 14th Avenue, but staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? Bring it back to the council.
I would move for the adoption of 17-348.
We need to suspend the rules. Move to waive the rules first.
Oh, all right. Well, then I would move to waive the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone from the public like to speak to this? If not, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. If there is none, then would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
So that we've waived the rules, we will now vote on.
Well, I would move for approval of 17-348.
Anyone from the public like to speak to this? Bring it back to the council for discussion.
James, just real quick, when is the anticipation of this work commencing?
I have not actually seen the final schedule from the contractor just yet. I know we have the pre-construction conference scheduled upcoming here within, I believe, later this week. So it should be noted that we will certainly not close it during EAA. You know, that was one thing that we did, you know, put right into the contract documents that, you know, this is something, you know, EAA goes on, you know, this will be fully open during that time. So, but I haven't seen their schedule just yet. Similar to Oshkosh Avenue, we'll get message boards out a good week in advance before it's going to close.
Are we going to have Oregon Street closed at the same time for that road construction, or is that going to have some lanes going through? Because that's two major north-south roads. Aren't we doing stormwater work on?
The work we're doing isn't going to disrupt the traffic on Oregon this year.
Okay.
Well, just the pre-work for sewer eventually.
All sewers?
Yeah, so.
Okay. That might already be done.
Yeah.
There's no further questions. The staff, would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
New resolutions, the first is Resolution 17-349, it's approve operator license, in perennas, staff recommends denial. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we could just take a second, the purpose of this resolution is to determine whether an operator's license should be issued to Cole Wiley Stephen Miller under Chapter 125. You have a copy of his application, as well as the recommendation to the council that you not issue the license from Chief Smith. You also have a request from Mr. Miller to issue the license in spite of the chief's his presentation of why he believed that the license shouldn't issue and then allow Mr. Miller to respond to that, just because it may make more sense in the, in the context of this. The council will have the opportunity to ask any questions and after that discussion, then we would need the motion to approve the resolution and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Chief Smith?
Yes, sir. As chief of police, it's my responsibility to investigate each applicant for an operator's license to serve alcohol in the city. During this investigation, it was discovered that Mr. Mueller was charged with operating while intoxicated a motor vehicle on December the twentieth, twenty sixteen, after being involved in a motor vehicle crash and was convicted of that offense on March the eighth of twenty seventeen of operating with a prohibited blood alcohol content greater than point oh eight. January third of twenty seventeen, fourteen days after he was charged with the first offense, Mr. Miller was also charged with operating while intoxicated, second offense, operating with a restricted controlled substance. The report indicated that he admitted to driving around smoking marijuana, driving a motor vehicle around. It should be noted that both of these incidents have occurred within the last six months and Mr. Mueller has not reached the legal age of drinking, which is twenty-one years of age. Mr. Mueller is not qualified for an operator's license due to a pattern of behavior showing a disregard of the law. The circumstances of the two incidences are substantially related to the licensed activity and that the license sought is related to the service of alcoholic beverages. The timing of the two previous incidents indicate a pattern of offenses pertaining, excuse me. The timing of the two previous incidents indicate a pattern of offenses pertaining to alcohol and/or drugs and a disregard for the law. The licensed activity provides a high degree of independence, the ability to work unsupervised and discretionary. Essentially, the license permits him to serve alcohol at any establishment, whether it be a tavern, whether it be a restaurant, whether it be a convenience store. It also involves a high degree of independence in your judgment as it relates to access to and service of alcoholic beverages and an opportunity for committing similar offenses or other related offenses. This pattern is within six months of the date of the application for the license. The applicant was under the legal drinking age at the time of the offense, at the time the offenses were committed and is still under the legal drinking age at this time.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Miller?
Hello. All right. So as...
We need your name and address.
My name is Cole Miller. I am currently living at three seven five eight Somerset Way with my mother. And yes, correct, he had, there is a correction on that. This did occur in the last year. But in order for me to pay for my fines and charges that I'm being convicted of, I need, like, I just need a form of job. And the job that I wish to pertain is Pantry Seventy-Six, which is located on Jackson's now, or Jackson's now in Oshkosh here. Now, that may not be, well, it does sell, it does allow the retail of alcohol, however, it is not an open bar. So I still have to ID, you know, anybody who comes in and anybody who is able to, you know, who is pretty much, who wishes to buy alcohol or cigarettes of any sort, I still have to ID them now. For me to also just pay these fines, I also need a job. I am also going to college here at UW Oshkosh. I'm currently enrolled. But I need, or just, I wish to get my bartender's license just to move forward for my actions. I know that I've had a long string of, you know, defiant, you know, actions in the past, but I'm really wishing to grow from them and even just, like, change myself in the way. Also, I have not been charged with the second offense of, you know, OWI because as of today, it is also a pending charge. I have a legal attorney in my defense upon those charges. So I have not been charged, so technically I'm only charged with one.
I think you were, you were charged but not convicted.
Not convicted.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Miller?
It is related, so, charged, but it is not, because it is not, it has not gone to court yet.
It has, but I looked at CCAP, my understanding is there were some motions that were filed, so it's pending.
Correct.
There's been no conviction, but it was, it was a charged offense.
We're, by looking at CCAP, were you, what were the motions that are pending? Are they...
It doesn't indicate the specific nature of the motions.
Mr. Mueller, I'm sorry. Where are you going?
There's several other places of employment in that area.
Yes, but however, I do not have a license in which it's just too long and, you know, I mean, I'm, it's like two blocks away. I mean, it takes me, right now, I'm driving without a motor vehicle. I mean, I have my license taken away from me and I'm just, I'm not driving.
What I'm indicating is that on that particular corner, there, there is a used car lot. There is a, a service garage. There is also, there are also two franchise automobile dealers.
But the thing is also, I've talked to the owner and whatnot, they'd be willing to work around my schooling as well, making it a little more flexible on my part if I were to go back to school in order for me, you know. I have to be able to pay fines and also be able to, you know, make sure I have enough money to pay for student loans and...
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is that, is one of, is in your pleadings, for lack of a better term, you indicate that, you know, you need to work at this particular location because of its proximity to your residence. I'm pointing out that there are several other places of potential employment that would not require this oper, this bartender's license that are still within the same proximity, correct?
No.
Have you approached those places for employment?
Not yet.
Mr. Mueller, are you currently registered with UW Oshkosh, enrolled in UW Oshkosh?
Me?
Yes.
I've already completed my first year.
So are you aware of the STEP employment at the university? So if you're already there for classes, there are other work opportunities on the university campus?
Yes, but here's the thing, they didn't, they require work study and under...
Okay, I, I understand. There's challenges. It, it just seems that, you know, there's a high pressure here for this one and this one particular employment opportunity of which there are several others. And I realize that, you know, driving is one of those and, and that's a challenge. We, you know, we have to look at those things, but this doesn't seem like it would be an appropriate employment situation as, as Chief Smith indicated, that perhaps there's, that's an opportunity for you later on. Yeah, I, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I want to give you a lot of credit for getting up here because it's hard, you know. But, I mean, a lot of people drive bicycles around town, old, young. I mean, you can drive ten minutes on a bike and get a long distance. Your past, obviously, you can grow from it, you know. It doesn't mean you're going to be this kind of a situation for the rest of your life, but I would almost want to avoid this kind of a job because, I mean, you do have an issue right now. You know, you've got two, two issues. There's lots of other opportunities in Oshkosh for different jobs. I mean, maybe you want to avoid the alcohol scene because, I mean, just because this place has, doesn't serve alcohol, it allows you to get a bartender's license, which would allow you to go get a job at a bar, you know. So we really wouldn't want that, I don't think, at this point. That's my opinion.
Is there any other comments, council, or questions? Would it be appropriate to allow the mothers, others to speak?
Any other? Yep.
My name is Sean Mueller. I'm Cole's mom. I'm sure you understand as a mother, I have to be here, but I can tell you that he is a good boy. And what you don't know is that when he got his OWI, he went to help a friend out. He had no intention of driving and he didn't get in a crash. He slid into a bank, a snowbank. And he is very aware of the challenges that he has and he's very sorry for what he did. The second situation is pending and we have legal representation because I feel that it was an unfair situation. He was not driving around smoking pot. He was sitting in a parking lot and was approached without any reason whatsoever. And this is what our consult is going to be stating and that's why we're fighting it. I am not saying that he is perfect, but what I can tell you is I bartend and I know that there are bartenders out there that have had situations, OWIs, one, two, three, and they still are able to function. I also can tell you that I've had people who are of, in legal positions, police officers, et cetera, that come into the bar that I work at and are intoxicated and drive. And as a server, I know that I can't serve them. What I can tell you is they were served and knowing the law, they too have, they break it. So what I'm asking you is to consider, even if it's just a temporary, until we know the results of, you know, what is pending, to, given the opportunity, continue working here. He's been working here this summer. He's had his hours cut because he can't serve. We're trying to get him on hours where he won't have to after nine o'clock and then until the morning. But that's going to be difficult during school. He's staying with me. It's two blocks away. I understand the bicycle thing. I understand public transportation. The location that we're in, it's difficult to get public transportation. He'd still have to walk. Bicycles are not conducive in the winter, living in the state of Wisconsin. I work three jobs, so I can't drive him to and from. He's in a really healthy relationship with a very responsible girl. He has come a long way in the short period of time that he has had to endure these challenges. And what I can say as a mother, and I'm hoping that you all can understand this as a parent, he's a good boy. He wants to make the right decisions. He wants to move forward and we're hoping that you reconsider. Thank you.
Unless there's anybody else that would go to the, to the council now. Even though there is a recommendation to deny, you always make the motions in the affirmative. So it would take a motion to approve the resolution. A yes vote would grant the license. A no vote would deny the license. If you do a no vote, then we would need to go through the notice that I had provided to you in your packets as a draft to make sure that that meets what your decision is and we can make any changes to that by consensus and then we would need another motion to approve that. If, we only have to go through that if it's, if the resolution is to not grant the license.
So if, if, if it would be denied, can he reapply?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, he could wait some time if he read the information about this substantially related. One of the things that you do consider is how long has passed since, since an offense has occurred? In this case, I think they were both in December or early January. And so one of the things that was, is a potential for him is to wait and come back at a future date when there's a little more time that's lapsed and that may factor into that substantially related analysis for you.
Can I ask one more question? With your college, with loans, aren't they deferred when you're in college? You don't have to start paying them until after you graduate?
Generally, yes.
And I mean, how long is your license potentially going to be suspended for, too?
Well, it's still pending. Like, my operator license for driver's license, that is still pending depending on how this case goes with the motion. Like, I just found out, like, as of today, we found out that it's still, you know, there's no decision that has been made. I went in at eight thirty in the morning and there's no decision quite yet. But I think for a rough estimate, we probably would do.
Right now, we're looking at July, but it depends on what he, what happens with this second charge. If that, if that occurs.
Right, Chief, it's six months, first offense?
He'll be done with that in July, but then the second offense...
Second would then be, yeah, okay.
Excuse me, isn't there an occupational license they can get after, that restricts them?
There are provisions for occupational licenses. It's been a while since I've done the prosecution, so I can't off the top of the head recall all the details on those anymore, but that, that might be a possibility.
I think there might be.
Mayor? I, I think the part that I struggle with, because I certainly, obviously, support...
Can we have a motion first? I'm sorry, just...
All right. So then we, we're just looking to...
It would be a motion to approve...
All right. So then I would make a motion to approve seventeen dash three forty-nine.
Second?
Second. Now...
No discussion.
Council discussion, yeah.
Thank you. What I was saying is that, you know, certainly I understand where the chief is coming from. Certainly, you know, nobody wants to set you up in a situation to fail either. You know, if you're, you're going in the right path, I certainly agree with my, what my other council members are saying. I think one of the things that I struggle with, though, is that often we see many people that make a lot of mistakes and then because there's a number of challenges, then they're in a cycle. And because there's nothing and no way for gainful employment, when you do have the challenges that you have, sometimes it often then only then makes the problem worse because there's not a way out of it. So it's kind of a struggle because, you know, really, we're not in the business of determining, you know, how somebody makes an income to pay their bills. We're, we're not the judge and jury here on moral, ethical, and somebody's character. So this is a really tough call. This is something I'm really struggling with because a job is a job and, and you certainly do have some challenges, which you brought on, you know, yourself, which clearly you can see that. But have you, have you looked into the occupational license?
I have, and, you know...
It's not cost effective. It's, it's too expensive. I mean, we've, we've got two kids in college and, it's that and our divorce. We've got two kids in college and working free jobs and it's, for the amount that we'd have to pay for an occupational would be too expensive to maintain a jerks on the car. It, it's just, we've decided that that's not the best and that's why he's living with me and that's why he sought employment at the gas station. At the time, we weren't even thinking that he required to have a license initially when he applied. They were very receptive and since he has been turned down, they've put ads in the, in the window or help one and signs in the window and they've cut his hours. So it certainly has had an impact on his income. Seeking other employment, I understand what you're saying, that there are other businesses. However, what we've found is it's really difficult to find businesses that are willing to work around his, his school schedule, which we feel is very, very important for him to continue so that he has other opportunities in the future. I appreciate you saying that. With me working as many hours as I do, I cannot get him to and from and even the public transportation, the bus only goes so far. It doesn't go, you know, as far as we'd like it to go. Ubers and whatnot, that's, it's going to kind of negate your income. And, you know, he is, he is paying his own, his own bills, his own fines, et cetera. He also is participating in a voluntary program where he goes and he gets tested and he has attended counseling at the university. So he's doing everything in his power that he can to move forward and to learn from his system.
Can I ask a question? Are we able to put any restrictions on a license or contingencies?
No. Your job, the, what a license allows him to do is defined by statute. So if you grant him a license, he can work at the gas station, he can work at a bar, he can work at any, any establishment serving alcohol. The license is established by statute. Essentially, what you guys are determining is, are you qualified to hold the license or not qualified to hold the license? You, you're not allowed to condition that.
How long do we grant a license for? What's the time period?
One year.
Again, I mean, to echo what Ms. Allison Osby said, you know, this is a very difficult decision. And I, I'm not going to moralize about this and whatever, but, you know, it, it, when I look at the timing of the two, and, and I understand your, your comment about how the first one was, he was going out to help someone, unfortunately, that doesn't mitigate it. And, and, and your comment about, will other people do this? I mean, we are hearing this all over the national news right now.
That's not, that's not-
That, well, is, but that, you know, that, that, you know, and I appreciate the fact that you're, you under, you are going to school, you, you're trying to move forward with this. But again, you know, I, I truly believe that, and as Ms. Palmieri asked, there is employment available through the university, um, and I think it's based on need, and I would think that, that you would be a good candidate for that type of employment, to basically say, "Look, I've got no other opportunities." Have you, did you, did you even explore that at the university?
I'm on probation right now, so that also affects how I'm able to get a job with my person there academic probation-wise, because it's been a tough, a tough year. And to tell you this, it has been a very tough year, even just with the academics.
That's why he's, he's at home now. He's out of the, the college area. He's living at home. It's that he's in a, a very healthy relationship. Um, he's, it's unfortunate that he went through phase.
So then, so then really, the, you are not currently a student at Oshkosh?
I am.
He's just on a probation. Sorry, all right, okay.
But there's only certain jobs there for, sorry, excuse me, but there's certain jobs there where I applied for, but they require a certain GPA. And that's the thing is, you know, they may are for need, but they also require a certain GPA, their GPA, as their students and residents there then.
But there are also jobs around the perimeter of the university that are within walking distance that are not university-associated. Strip malls, pizza, sandwich shops.
Deputy Mayor?
I guess the comment I have is, is going back to originally what the license activity and substantially related offenses. We can talk about jobs all we want, and it is important that it keeps a job, obviously, but I go back to what's in our information, and it, you know, basically states, Wisconsin statutes prohibit discrimination employment or licensing based upon an arrest or conviction record unless the circumstances of the charges substantially relate to the circumstances of the particular job, and that's what's in question here. So, um, I would concur with Chief Smith, and, um, I think that's, that's what we have to determine, is that unfortunately, the situation young man's in relates to, substantially relates to the circumstances of the job he's trying to get an application for. And unfortunately, he'll have to probably look somewhere else. And that's not our role, that's his. Ours is to make sure that we go by the statutes, and that's what I am going to use to determine my decision.
And I would, I would agree, Mr. Herman. The, the choice to make, your decision to put your keys in the ignition after having the alcohol, it, it directly relates to then being able to serve or sell alcohol.
So the, the motion is to approve the license. A yes vote would grant the license. A no vote would deny the license pursuant to the recommendation from Chief Smith.
Is there any more comment, uh, from council? Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
No.
Pansky?
No.
Crowsey?
No.
Pack?
No.
Paul Mary?
No.
Allison Osby?
No.
Cummings?
No.
Lost, zero seven. So, Mr. Mayor, then, because it lost and the, the license would be denied, I would direct the council's attention to the notice of non-issuance of operator's license that was in your materials that I had drafted. Do you want me to just run through it, or, okay?
Please.
Um, I drafted this based upon the letter that Chief Smith made. As I go through, if there are any corrections, um, just wave at me or yell or something, and I'll stop and make the correction. This matter coming before the council on July eleventh, twenty seventeen. Findings of fact, conclusions of law, that the applicant Cole Wiley Stephen Miller was notified verbally and in writing of the municipality's intention not to issue an operator's license to him pursuant to the recommendation of Chief Dean Smith of the Oshkosh Police Department, and provided an opportunity to address the common counsel for the city of Oshkosh when the council considered the application on July eleventh, twenty seventeen at six P.M. or as soon thereafter as the matter could be heard, all pursuant to the provisions of section one twenty-five twelve of the Wisconsin statutes. That Chief Dean Smith of the Oshkosh Police Department explained his recommendation to deny the issuance of an operator's license to Mr. Miller, that Cole Wiley Stephen Miller appeared in person before the council, and Sean Miller also appeared and spoke on behalf of Mr. Miller, that after careful consideration, the common counsel has determined that Mr. Cole Wiley Stephen Miller had not be issued an operator's license under chapter one twenty-five of the Wisconsin statutes for the following reasons. Mr. Miller is not qualified for an operator's license due to a pattern of behavior showing a disregard for the law, including an arrest in December twenty sixteen and subsequent conviction on March eighth, twenty seventeen, for operating a motor vehicle with a prohibited blood alcohol content greater than point oh eight, and an arrest in January twenty seventeen for operating while under the influence of an intoxicant or other drug, which is currently pending in court. The circumstances of the two incidents are substantially related to the licensed activity in that the license sought is related to the service of alcohol beverages. The timing of the two previous incidents indicates a pattern of offenses pertaining to alcohol and/or drugs and a disregard for the law. The licensed activity provides a high degree of independence, ability to work unsupervised, and discretionary judgment in relation to access to and service of alcoholic beverages, and an opportunity for committing similar offenses or other related offenses. This pattern is within six months of the date of application for the license. The applicant was under the legal drinking age at the time the offenses were committed and is still under the legal drinking age. The operator's license application of Mr. Cole Wiley Stephen Miller is denied, and the city clerk is directed to give notice of this decision to the applicant dated this eleventh day of July, twenty seventeen. And then I would have the mayor sign that on behalf of the council. If that's acceptable, I'll take a motion. Is there corrections?
There, there was one correction.
Yep.
Uh, sub-two, second paragraph.
Yes.
Third line, subsequent on conviction, subsequent conviction on March eighth.
Conviction on, huh, yep, thank you. Got it. Any other corrections? Otherwise, a motion to approve the, the findings as they'll be corrected, and what I will do is, I'll make the corrections, and if the mayor can just stop in my office and sign it after we can-
Make a motion to accept the finding.
Second.
Is your second? Now, do we take the vote?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried. The clerk will just, after the mayor signs the findings, the clerk will send that out.
Deputy Mayor Herman, you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion amendment to the, the agenda. If we could move resolution seventeen-three fifty-one forward and then come back with seventeen-three fifty. Most of the citizens in the audience are here for three fifty-one. Second that.
Any discussion from the people in the chamber?
Can we prove that on unanimous consent?
As long as Pam's okay.
I'm good.
So then would we, do we have unanimous consent? To move it?
Yeah.
And they against that?
Nope.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved, I guess. So, go ahead, call that one.
Resolution, oh, do you, we can move on to resolution three fifty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Approve twenty seventeen Great Neighbors Capital Improvement Program funding in the amount of ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this resolution? And if there's more than one, you can, you know, kind of line up so we can keep moving. And we'll need your name and address.
My name is Rob Casper. I live at twenty-three fifty-five Parkside Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Ferry Crossing Neighborhood Association. I wrote the application for the work at Tech Miller Diamond. Um, it's a great park in our neighborhood. Over the last few years, it's received a lot of updates. The last, which was just approved earlier in the meeting, is the bathroom renovations that are going on, which would leave our diamond as the last portion of the park to really get upgraded, and we'd have a full sweep of new amenities there. Um, it's a very important park to the area. Uh, the Oshkosh North High School, about ninety percent plus of their kids playing baseball have played at that park in the past. Currently, we have a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five kids from the YMCA that play there. They are only allowed to practice because of the shape of the field. It's pretty unsafe. There's fence that's falling down. Uh, the field's pretty rough, so it really is in, in need of some, some updates, and that would probably double how many kids are able to use it. Uh, we're also working with a couple neighborhood associations as far as the Oshkosh North Youth Baseball, and I've also contacted YMCA. Particularly, North Youth Baseball is able to provide some funding and help do updates in the future for, like, bleachers or whatever upon their, you know, getting some use of the diamond. They also have monies available that they'd like to add a batting cage in that area and kind of use that park as home base. So we're really hoping that this will pass and that we can get that work underway this year. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Just say ditto.
Jennifer Jensen, twenty-four, twenty Parkside Drive. Um, just in full support of the Tech Miller baseball diamond renovation there, the safety of the kids is my utmost concern, so this would be a tremendous asset to our park and our neighborhood associations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, Rachel Poe Mackey, twelve eighty Fairfax.
Julie Kiefer, twenty-eight, ten Fast Tail Lane.
And we're here in representation, oh, sorry, neighborhood association, and we have two items that we're seeking. One is a buckthorn grant, as well as a grant for a master plan for the trail system that exists in our neighborhood.
Just, uh, two big concerns within our neighborhood, and majority of complaints that we have received are about the buckthorn, the invasive species that's taking over. Um, having that removed would be a great first step. And then, second, creating a master plan. Our neighborhood has been in existence for over twenty years, and there is not a developed plan for what's going to happen with that space, and being able to hand that off to a consultant and take all the neighborhood politics out of it would be very helpful. Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Hanche, fifty-two Evoline Street. I'm the coordinator for the Stevens Park Neighborhood Association, and we basically monitor Stevens Park. Most of the items that we are requesting for roughly four thousand dollars are, of course, safety items in the park. First of all, the, uh, small shelter on the west side is not accessible, and the Parks Department and the association will be making that small shelters accessible, so that we now have two shelters in the park that can be used by the handicap. The, uh, second item, uh, we had requested and granted the signage of trees within the park, so that we will be developing a plaque naming all of the trees, so that the local schools, Washington, uh, and the other schools can come there as a, uh, nature project to, uh, identify the trees. A third project is that we will be, uh, putting up a bulletin board for the use of both the Parks Department and the Stevens Park Neighborhood Association to advertise, you know, parkdoings and our, our happenings. And finally, uh, the park has a pathway through it, and we are requesting that that pathway be monitored to such an extent that on one end of it, we can put up signage that will say, uh, "This is not a public thoroughfare," and on the other end, some method of keeping all of the vehicles off of that basically ten-foot-wide path, which is strictly for use by the Parks Department and Stevens Park Neighborhood Association, uh, to monitor the park. Stevens Park Neighborhood Association collects all of the garbage in that park and distributes it to, to the local, uh, garbage collection. So we have permission to use the drive. Today, for an example, a car drove in, could not walk roughly three hundred feet to the tennis courts, dropped off their tennis rackets and their tennis balls, and came back out. Those are the problems that we're running into, and that's why we're requesting some of this funding for safety precautions, because the pathway is used extensively by skateboarders, by, uh, bicycles, and by people walking their dogs through the park, and you have pedestrian, you have the public thinking that that is their access road through the park, and then they drive out the other side. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this resolution? I see no one coming forward. Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just, just a comment. I, I just want to compliment the citizens for getting involved in our neighborhoods and, uh, working with the city staff, and, uh, you know, council's put money into this by wanting to have, uh, staff involved with that, so it's, it's just a great opportunity again for public-private partnership, and, uh, I will support it.
I see no other council member wanting to speak, so I'll ask the city clerk to take the roll.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried, seven.
There's supposed to be no public outbursts. That was not an outbursts. Okay, resolution seventeen dash three five zero, approve tax increment district number thirty-three project plan, designate tax increment district number thirty-three boundaries, create tax increment district number thirty-three Lamaco redevelopment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, members of the Oshkosh community. Uh, my name is Kyle Bach. I'm the president and CEO of Anex Student Living. Um, I'm at four oh nine Massachusetts Avenue, Suite three hundred, Indianapolis, Indiana. A part of our investment thesis on, on, on new investment transactions crossed our platform is that we have campus and community support. Um, the campus here at UW Oshkosh has embraced us, um, as a partner. Um, I use that term loosely, of course. Um, there's no financial obligations between us, but they have embraced us as an alternative option for housing for their students. Um, and everybody here at, at the community level has also embraced us. Staff has been very, very accommodating. Uh, the people of the Oshkosh community have been very accommodating. We look forward to being a member of your community. We, our mission statement revolves around serving as a catalyst for economic growth. And what that means is not only the residents that live with us, the campuses that we serve, and the communities that we serve. And so we think our request today, um, is well warranted for redevelopment of the former Lamaco site. I've spent, uh, probably half a dozen times up here in Oshkosh, and every time I drive past that site, clearly that's the only thing that's left to redevelop in that area, uh, so I commend you on your efforts to this point, uh, and I, I look forward to kind of finishing the puzzle. Uh, and so I'm here to answer, uh, any questions that you may have. I'm sure that you have several, and, um, again, look forward to being a part of your community. Thank you.
Any, are there any questions or comments from the committee? While Mr. Bach is up here, Mr. Davis?
Okay, I'll make one comment. We talked the other day, and my question was, uh, the communities where you've done projects such-
Mayor?
Yes.
I think we have to, we have to get it on the floor.
Yeah, it's on the floor, yeah.
On the floor yet.
We need a motion.
Yes, yep.
Mm-hmm. And I would move for approval of seventeen-three fifty. Second?
Second.
Now we can discuss. to compete with us and other people who need to improve their property, because the student has a choice, right? Yes, they might be able to save a little bit, but when we run a reality check, right, our units are all-inclusive, fully furnished, all utilities, all of that. When they run a reality check and are sharing a closet with one of their peers in a substandard living environment, and they can understand the validity of living with something like us, again, the landlord has a choice, and we can't obviously make the determination what the landlord does, but my assumption is, and what we have seen in the past, is that single-family landlords will then have to improve their properties because they have no choice.
Thank you.
Mr. Peck. With regard to the surface, the impervious surface ratio, areas ratio, so in the plan, it looks like there's all surface parking, there's no underground parking.
Correct.
There's very limited green space. I'm sure Mr. Birch will talk to this later, but I'm just curious, what were some of the calculations considered in terms of the underground parking to free up some of that? Because the surrounding character, you know, we don't have these large parking lots.
Sure.
And with that, many students in one location, you know, to not have this kind of little more roaming space, can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, certainly. And so, thank you for keeping that up. Our traditional, our platform across our entire portfolio of fifteen assets, we run at a point-seven spaces per bed parking ratio. There's studies behind it. There's some rationale behind that, but that's our typical structure. And as you can see from this, which, you know, in my opinion, I'm very, very pleased with our architect's design and renderings. As you can see at the corner where we have the one and a half story, what's our leasing center, it's our clubhouse area where the fitness room is and all the fundamental amenities, we have a courtyard out there, both with patio space and greenscape and landscaping. And so, you know, it's not our intention to have this asset and then a bunch of blacktop. We do spend a significant amount of time in our landscape designs, and, you know, certainly we are meeting code, our local ordinance code, but I, what we are trying to do as a community, not only here but in other communities, is to help get these peers together. And so we spend a lot of focus and time on design, interior design, wayfinding, lighting within the clubhouse and the outside, outside area. So in my opinion, I think we have a really good landscape plan here, and from the parking ratio perspective, it's fairly consistent across our platform.
Mr. Davis, if memory serves me, there is going to be a park almost across the street, correct?
That is correct. This is across the street from the access point we have for getting down to the Riverwalk. And if you recall, the Riverwalk, we held out a triangle shape for a park area, and of course, the Riverwalk is a linear park, so that is part of the plan, is to extend the Riverwalk north to serve, to connect this new facility to the Riverwalk along the Fox River. So a little, little mini park, as well as the long linear park that is the, our Riverwalk.
Thank you.
I could just follow up then. So were there calculations done as to what you'd be looking at to underground the parking as opposed to using the maximum possible impervious surface for parking?
I don't know that we actually went through that calculation, but I can tell you that a parking structure or underground is roughly eighteen thousand dollars per stall. And considering everything else that we have going into this project, that was just not financially feasible. Perhaps in the future, if we find that there's demand for additional units or beds in this particular community, since we do have a lot of...
I'm sorry, can I just stop you just a second? Did you just say you didn't make the calculation, but it's not financially feasible? Did I hear that right?
It wouldn't even be worth the time of making the calculation. If we go to point-seven spaces per bed at three hundred and ten beds at virtually twenty grand a stall, there's just no, no way whatsoever that would be financially feasible. My point then was, if we find there's demand, and we want to build more beds adjacent to our existing community, perhaps at that point in time, because we've already spent a lot of money on the infrastructure, a lot of the other site work costs, that in the future it could be, but for right now, it's just not financially feasible.
I think the other thing that went into that calculation was the subsurface soil. You have, you have, you have some environmental remediation, and the soils are not good there, and you also have a high groundwater condition. So if they were going to go with an underground system, it wouldn't be a true underground system. You'd be looking at, because I think the groundwater's at two feet, somewhere around there. You'd be looking at something where the, where half that structure, at least half the underground parking would be out of the ground, and you'd have a situation similar to what you have with Concord, with, yeah, with Concord and Morgan, or Crossing, where you have that first floor that is well above street level. The design on this particular one, which we like, is that we do have a street wall, but we also have that activity right, that first floor right close to ground level. So I think those are the other, some of the other considerations.
So if there was a trade-off, you know, the eighteen thousand for undergrounding the parking, and instead of doing that, it was, you know, going to increase your cost slightly to go, I believe it's after four stories, we have to, you go from wood construction to steel, wood, or was there even any discussion about the potential for going more vertical, say, six stories as opposed to four, and then allowing for more space? Or are we looking at a situation where, you know, this large parking lot is kind of an economical way of capping off those environmental soil concerns?
To answer your question first, it's, it's pure mathematics of what we can achieve in rent, right? And so we have to offset our expenses and our cost by what we can achieve in rent, right? And so that drives the entire cost of the project. And so if we were to place the burden then on the resident of an additional hundred and fifty dollars per bed, which isn't feasible in this market, then it's just not financially feasible to even consider something like that. And you're right, if we go above four stories, we're looking at concrete, perhaps steel, all of the above, which is then just significantly higher in cost.
Well, I'll just say that this is actually a really exciting project because of what it does for the community. I still have concerns about the ratio of that impervious surface being at the max in relation to what surrounds it, but the fact that it's going to provide these additional beds for young professionals and students, it's not just students, correct? It's student-driven, but also young professionals.
Students aren't a protected class in fair housing, and so the way we structure our unit mix and the way we operate and manage, of course, is geared towards students, but really, our target market, market is eighteen to twenty-six.
It also is going to take some pressure off some of the neighborhoods that are dealing with the shadow markets. I'm cautiously optimistic that that will improve because this will be raising the bar. It's affordable. It's slightly above, but it's still affordable. So I'm leaning towards supporting it.
Thank you.
Mr. Bach, thanks for talking with me there today on the phone.
Absolutely.
It was a great conversation. I just have a question on your, on your application a little bit. On, I don't know if you have it with you, but on page forty-six, you have under your soft cost fees, you have other, and it's miscellaneous. You have six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. What do you anticipate would be those types of soft costs that you're...
I can tell you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Give you two to the penny if you'd like.
No, 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 just, just general.
So the TVs in the units, utility and miscellaneous permit fees, unit furniture, a component of this as student housing is that we furnish every one of our units. That's four hundred and three thousand, by the way.
Okay.
Art and design, developer overhead and project management of seventy-five thousand dollars, construction inspections from the bank, for a total of almost six hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, great. No, I, I agree with Councilmember Paul Mary. I have a little bit of concern on the, on the parking, but I think it's, it fits in our central city plan. It works in our bite in the area and enhances the opportunity for our students that want to come to Oshkosh, and I think it would be a nice selling point for the university. So I think it's another great opportunity, and I also like the fact that it's not a twenty-seven year TIF, like some of our other TIFs have been.
Absolutely.
And from looking at the information we got, obviously, you guys have built in other communities, have been very successful. So I think it's a great project, and I'm going to support it.
Thank you.
Not to mention three hundred and ten residents right down across the street from where a new supermarket's supposed to go.
Yeah, which might help that come home.
Can I just follow up to Mr. Herman's point to asking about the miscellaneous? You mentioned the seventy-five thousand on the development overhead and project management. Wouldn't that be covered in the developer fee of the seven hundred thousand up there under the soft costs?
No, it's not. So our policy and procedure across all of our assets, it's a four percent development fee, two percent development contingency, and one percent development overhead. So that's essentially the overhead cost. And that is me staying at Hilton Garden Inn tonight and trying the restaurants here in town, I mean, those, that's all right, right? I mean, we've got, we've had staff here for well over a year, and so that's our costs.
Thanks.
Have we in the past approved a TIF that it, within the soft costs, includes furnishing the units? Because what was that, like four hundred thousand?
Four oh three.
Four oh three?
I was going to say, the only one off the top of my head would probably be the Best Western, because that did include furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and that was a big number. I want to say that was in the millions of dollars.
So to kind of follow up on her question, what we as a city are, we, besides giving them a TIF, what are we obligated to do for this development?
Let's see. We are working on that development agreement right now.
Yes, that I know we don't have yet.
That's going to be that, the remediation and the site preparation is all that the TIF would be paying for as part of this. We're also paying for some public infrastructure, like the trail I mentioned earlier, and some cul-de-sacs and pedestrian connections. So if they don't do the project, we probably wouldn't do those trails or cul-de-sacs. And if they don't do the project, of course, we don't pay any pay-go. So I don't think we're obligated to do anything yet.
And I guess that wasn't even brought up yet, that this is a pay-go TIF, so the skin in the game is a little bit more on their end than it is on our end, right?
That is correct. They would be taking the risk. The city would not be borrowing any money upfront, and our intent for the public improvements is to wait, there's enough cash value in the TIF to actually pay cash for those improvements.
Well, I think this is a very exciting project because it's eliminating one more piece of blight in the central city. And that's been, it's been idle for how many years? And before that, even though they were in production, it wasn't a terribly well-maintained piece of property in the city. So I think that's very exciting, and I think the thing that I find exciting too is it may force those landlords that own some of the properties in the off-campus housing, that it may force them to start improving their property, which is the whole goal of our rental inspection program. So it's going to, I think it's going to improve the housing in the campus area a great deal. So hopefully, there'll be more units going in, and it's just going to make our better central city.
One other question, Mr. Davis. You mentioned to me before the meeting when I asked you, could you just go over that? The other concern about underground parking was our new, our new water tower in the area?
Let's see. Well, part of the, the city is building a new water tower right across the right of, we're looking at a land swap for the project that would allow them to use the old water tower, and we would reserve space on their existing site for the second water tower. And at some point, the city will want to use that site seventy-five, a hundred years from now. The big thing that limits the underground parking is, I think, the ground, the groundwater gets real close to the surface, and that's been a problem for every project that I'm familiar with in that neighborhood. And I could tell you that even the underground parking that was constructed was constructed at a much higher cost than was originally planned, so I can understand their reticence. And looking at something like that long-term, because the financial feasibility, I would agree with Mr. Bach, you couldn't build five million dollars and, or six million dollars into this project and still keep it feasible.
Okay, just, this is more maybe nine related to this. With this development, what is left in that Marion Road District acreage that would still need to be developed?
We have Parcel H, which is at the corner of Jackson and Marion. We have Parcel I, which is between the Aurora Clinic and Lamaco and the proposed annex. And we also have the vacant lot at the corner of Jackson and the Fox River. Two of those have existing options. The one that doesn't is the one beside Lamaco Annex. That one, we're still looking for somebody to express interest in that project.
And do you, do you believe from the planning department's viewpoint that this project could probably spur that future development in that area?
It will definitely help spur that development for the balance of that neighborhood, yes, especially when it comes to the commercial. Somebody mentioned the grocery store. There could other be, be other goods, services, entertainment that would help these three hundred and fifty-some residents would help spur that development.
Okay. This is more probably for you, James. With a development like this, is that putting any added stress into our public infrastructure, public works, anything in that area? Because that's a high-volume number of students and things. Are we...
We're very closely analyzing the sanitary sewer capacity, and we are close, but we have the capacity to handle the load from this structure. Certainly with the water tower being right next door, you know, water supply is not an issue or pressures. But the sanitary sewer was the closest one that we had to make sure we took a very close look at, and we've worked through that, and we find that we've got the capacity there right now to be able to handle it with the infrastructure that we have in place.
Okay. I know Chief Smith isn't here. Maybe Mr. Offick can address this. Has the Fire Department weighed in on this and the Police Department as far as the additional personnel numbers in that area?
I think that that's something that the staff is always working with PD and Fire Department on, when as we've done long-range planning for this area, we've taken a look at the impact of public safety, impact on public safety for this area, and we'll be able to accommodate.
In fact, I believe that's why the cul-de-sacs are being built in the long term for this, for the Fire Department vehicle turnarounds.
Okay. And then, this is not part of UWO's policing or anything, so any calls to service would be our Police Department, made backed up by UWO, obviously. It's a great working relationship, so.
And I think Chief Smith would prefer that, to have that jurisdiction.
There could other be, be other goods, services, entertainment that would help, these 350-some residents would help spur that development.
This is more probably for you, James. With a development like this, is that putting any added stress into our public infrastructure, Public Works, anything in that area? Because that's a high-volume number of students and things. Are we?
We're very closely analyzing the sanitary sewer capacity, and we are close, but we have the capacity to handle the load from this structure. Certainly with the water tower being right next door, you know, water supply is not an issue or pressures, but the sanitary sewer was the closest one that we had to make sure. We took a very close look at, and we've worked through that, and we find that we've got the capacity there right now to be able to handle it with the infrastructure that we have in place.
Okay. I know Chief Smith isn't here, maybe Mr. Roloff can address this. Has the fire department weighed in on this and the police department as far as the additional personnel numbers in that area?
I think that that's something that the staff is always working with PD and fire department on, whereas we've done long-range planning for this area, we've taken a look at the impact of public safety, impact on public safety for this area, and we'll be able to accommodate it.
In fact, I believe that's why the cul-de-sacs are being built in the long term for this, for the fire department vehicle turnarounds.
Okay. And then, this is not part of UWO's policing or anything, so any calls to service would be our police department, made backed up by UWO, obviously. It's a great working relationship, so.
And I think Chief Smith would prefer that, to have that jurisdiction to be maintained by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask one follow-up question that relates to that, Mr. Bach? So I don't know, are you familiar with the Oshkosh twice-a-year pub crawl that occurs?
I am.
You're, you'll have onsite management and oversight in that, at this location. What about the culture and this space, do you anticipate, I guess, mitigating that? Or, I mean, some of the surrounding areas have had significant either vandalism or litter or garbage surrounding those as recent as the last pub crawl. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So first of all, we're the developer and the general contractor. We are not the property manager. We have a third-party property management company out of Athens, Georgia. We went through a rigorous process in selecting who our management company is, and ultimately ended up choosing Landmark because our cultures are aligned. This project and all of my other projects, we go through all the development, the construction, and the challenges that come through that. The most important reason that our company and what we preach every single day is for our residents. We want to prepare them for life after college. The young man who had the courage to get up here and speak earlier, there's a lot of kids who are 18 to 21, who are young, naive, and mature. We want to help them, right? And so our management company, in conjunction with us, offers what's called a PAWS program. It's, the acronym stands for philanthropy, academic, wellness, and social, right? And so we spend a significant amount of time programming those functions at our communities. And so we will have 310 beds, we'll have a full-time property manager, we'll have a full-time maintenance, we'll have a part-time maintenance, and probably six, what we call community ambassadors. And so those would be equivalent to what you might find as an RA, and so coordinating those resident life events. And so they're 13 to 24 years old, 26, right? And so they're going to be independent and make their own decisions. But what we are preaching as a culture to them is that what they're doing every single day is going to impact their life after college. And so we spend a significant amount of time focusing on that. And I won't, I won't come up here and tell you that we haven't had a police call before, because we certainly have, right? But what we do to mitigate that, there might be a few bad apples here and there, is tremendous. And, you know, a part of my three-to-five-year strategic plan was to build a property management company. If Landmark continues to do what they're doing for us as a vendor, there's no need for us to do that. Our cultures are aligned, we get it.
Just one last gentleman to hear from Ellers. Do you want to give us a little bit of a financial of what you guys, looking at this TIF on behalf of the city, and give us some information? Thank you.
Good evening, John Cameron with Ellers. And in terms of the overall financing, we've prepared the project plan that you have for you. We've gone through the cash flows. We also have a gentleman in our office that has done the PERFORMA analysis. The cash flow shows the district closing at a fairly rapid pace, approximately 13 years. The, Mr. Roman from our office has gone through the PERFORMA analysis, and his findings are included in the project plan. Overall, this project seems like a very worthy project.
All right. Sure. Any more questions?
I was going to ask John to come up, because I didn't want him to drive up all the way with, you know, please participate. So thanks, Councilor Stenka-Herman.
Thank you.
You can sneeze before you take a roll. Would you please take a roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
We now move to council, thank you. Council discussion, direction of the city manager and future agenda items. The first is a budget workshop, number one, at July 22nd, 26th at 5:00 PM. Mr. Roloff, any comments?
No, we just have that, that's our opening workshop, and we'll have as much of the early preliminary information that we typically have, pretty much the employee personnel projections, obviously, with collective bargaining starting this year. There'll be a little bit of speculation, but we'll provide that information and projections based on that.
There's police and fire.
Police and fire, yes, and transit.
And transit.
You will provide me a get-out-of-jail-free card for my anniversary that evening, correct?
Bring it with you.
Well, I'll write you a note.
Call Uber or you want it where?
Next, we have request for greater city participation, Ashkosh Farmers Market, July 25. That's pretty much self-explanatory.
Yeah, that was, we just set the date based on the discussion from last meeting.
All right. This is the second opportunity for citizen statements. Citizens are addressed the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda or limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh. And the common council may address it at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering.
Good evening, Councilwoman Dennis Reimer, 2235 Brookview Court, Department G. I talked to Mr. Roloff last Wednesday, Mark. Me and my friend, we went to Sawdust Days for the fireworks, and I'll tell you something. The grounds, when you saw festival foods, the grocery bays full of mud, it just, the smell of urine, people walking around so frickin' drunk. It just, what a nice store, you know? Looks like a bunch of pigs walking around so inebriated. I told Mr. Roloff last week, I said, let's get Sawdust Days, move it out to Winnabeet County Park. It's all asphalt, there you go, gravel. Why ruin a beautiful park like Menominee Park? It just, you know, I told Mark, I said, next year for the fireworks, we're going to Amro. You got to make that eight-minute drive to Amro, so be it. Any questions, comments?
I see none, so thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember announcements and statements, request for presentation on July 25 by Think Youth Coalition. Councilman Crowsey.
One of my good friends, her name's Autumn Lismaier. She went to UW-Oshkosh. She's a health department, health educator. She approached me with her high school group for, to promote smoke-free parks in Oshkosh. Appleton has smoke-free parks. She stressed to me that parks are for children, so why would we allow smoking at them? They want to give a presentation on the 25th to just tell Oshkosh what the benefits would be of a smoke-free parks.
Typically, these presentations, we'll put at the beginning of the meeting, just separate from citizen's statements. If that's okay, we can do it that way.
All right. This is not on the agenda, but it has to do with the city attorney Lorenson, who recently celebrated her 25th anniversary with the city of Oshkosh. So thank you, congratulations for all your hard work, and I won't say another 25 years.
Thank you.
How did you graduate law school by the time you were 15?
I was four when I started.
Oh, all right, all right, okay.
Child prodigy.
But thank you.
Thank you.
And for putting up with all of us and some of our predecessors.
That's why she thinks it only feels like 35 years.
City manager announcements and statements, Mr. Roloff, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a memo in your packet regarding two final items that we were working on with respect to buckstaff removal. These were within the budget, statewide raise in the asbestos removal, and Vinton Construction, we actually, from that foundation that we were responsible for removing, cost us $70,000 to remove it, or to have the gravel, or the foundation crushed into gravel, and we actually have that now in our stockpile. That was part of the arrangement we had, so we're happy to report that. And there was some, perhaps some misinformation, I wanted to make sure we pointed out, that the remediation at that site, because of the work that the crews from Public Works did, we were under budget by that, by $50,000. I really appreciate the work of Public Works, as well as Mother Nature, in making it the time available for our Public Works crews to get it. The arena folks are still astounded at the ability that our folks were able to get groundbreaking started in such a timely fashion. So wanted to do that a little bit editorial, because it was a, it was a very, it was a risk we took, but the risk paid off very well.
Mr. Roloff, as long as you're mentioning that, and you're talking about the arena, I got a couple of calls last week from a couple concerned citizens where we approved the transfer. When we save money on a street project such as stormwater, water, any of the things, they have to go back into the same type of program, right? We can't just throw it to something totally different.
Correct.
So if it's, if it's, it's a approved stormwater project that came in under budget, it has to go to another stormwater project, correct?
It's either that or we borrow less. It's one of the two things, so.
Okay, so it can't be transferred, so a sidewalk has to stay with sidewalk, everything has to be a line, item type.
Yes.
Issue, okay. So, because that was a concern, that some of the citizens thought that we, you know, we overbudgeted, or we did whatever, and we're just going to move that money all over the place, but it's designated dollars for, but it can be transferred to another designated project, but stormwater, sidewalk, et cetera.
Correct. We did the, that's what we did with the utilities with the project. We moved utility money to cover utility costs similarly.
It also is required due to arbitrage rules related to the bonding. In other words, you can't bond for something and then put it over into an.
I just wanted a clarification, and I thought it was important, as long as we're talking about the arena, to get that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the arena update is really, that pretty much covers that. The project, I'm told from Mr. Pierce, that the project is on schedule. The first game is scheduled for November 17, and they plan to have tip-off in the arena. So, so far, so good, but we'll keep waiting for those reports. I do have one other thing that I put in your packet tonight. Mayor Cummings and I had our quarterly meeting with chairs of boards and commissions, and we got some, we have a draft, as you recall, from the workshop that we had on boards and commissions. We said we were going to do a survey. This is the draft survey. Welcome, any thoughts you have. Our goal is to get the survey out early next week, so if you can look at this. What we did was we took the options that were in the report and broke them down into individual comments for people to rate, from strongly disagree to strongly agree, as well as identify at the end what if they're either a member of council, a member of a board or commission, or a member of staff. That way, when we bring the results back to council, you'll be able to slice and dice that information, knowing how certain groups felt.
I'm sorry, so then, is the idea, though, that council would see from the boards and commissions' participation results first, and then we complete ours?
No, you're going to be given this as well. We have, you, at the end of the survey, I am a council member, I am a board or commission member, or I'm a staff representative, so we'll be able to show you all the different results. The idea of the council, this is where the council's leaning based on this survey, this is where boards and commissions are, and this is where staff is. If you find some alignment, there may be some opportunities to say, look, we've got general agreement on those things, because it's going to be a very difficult process if you decide to do something with boards or commissions, which was always the real awkward part. But if the groups as a whole are generally okay with it, it gives you an indication that maybe it's a little easier to make that decision than if you didn't know that information. So if you have any thoughts on it, the boards or commissions gave us really good feedback this morning. We made some changes. The draft reflects the changes that they gave us, so if you can take a look at it, give us some thoughts or comments, we'll incorporate that into the version we send out next week, and we're going to give everybody till August 7. So my goal would be at the second meeting in August, here are the results, we'll give it to you as soon as we compile them, but we'll get you the results, and you can start making some decisions on any changes you may want to consider.
And one thing we've been doing, which you may not be aware of, we're having all of the chairs, the board and commissions, do public service announcements, explaining what that board or commission does. I mean, the plan commission, what does a plan commission really plan and do? So that's been very helpful. Emily said we're getting some pretty good response from people who are finally, finally learning what the different boards and commissions do. So we're getting more applications because of that.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I had a comment, I didn't get up there fast enough.
Okay, sure, come on.
When you called for citizen statements, I couldn't get up here fast enough. Jane Doherty, 11 Cannon of Court, and I'm just making an announcement on behalf of the Oshkosh Senior Center to remind folks of the Food Truck Friday at South Park. Support the Oshkosh Senior Center by attending Food Truck Friday, July 14 and August 11, 5 to 9. Support the Oshkosh Senior Center.
Thank you.
Jake, can you get that on the website?
I think Parks is already promoting it.
I see the thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
The gentleman behind the curtain.
I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.